Good evening. The October 28th, 2025 final public hearing and regular board meeting is now in order. I would like to welcome my fellow board members and the public. I would like to take this opportunity to remind the public that the appropriate place for public participation in the meeting is during your individual public comment opportunity as identified on the agenda. Outside of your individual public comment opportunity, your role in this meeting is as an observer. Paul, roll call, please.
Mr. Trent?
Here.
Mr. Susan?
Here.
Ms. Campbell?
Here.
Ms. Wright?
Here.
Mr. Thomas?
Here.
At this time, the board would like to hold a moment of silence. I invite the audience to join. Thank you. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That brings us to the adoption of the agenda. Dr. Rendell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On this evening's agenda, we have forty-eight consent items, sixteen public hearing items, one action item, and one information item. Changes made to the agenda since it was released to the public include the following: revised with C1 administrative recommendations, F1 travel approval, F20 job description, added was F24, another job description, director, performance data analyst, and special programs, and pulled was F12 termination of employee.
Do I hear motion?
Move to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Paul, roll call, please.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Ms. Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Trent?
Aye.
Mr. Susan?
Aye.
Ms. Wright?
Aye.
We are now at the administrative staff recommendations. Do I hear motion?
Move to approve.
Okay.
Any discussion? Paul, roll call, please.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Ms. Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Trent?
Aye.
Mr. Susan?
Aye.
Ms. Wright?
Aye.
Dr. Rendell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Eric, you ready? Congratulations to Erica Green on her promotion to position of assistant principal at the Great Southwest Middle School. Congratulations.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you to the board. I have lots of people to thank, but will attempt to keep this brief. This has been four states, twenty-plus years, and eight grade levels in the making. I really thank you for recognizing my hard work and commitment to students. Special thanks to my parents, Mr. Melvin Jackson and Ms. Sharon Turner, and I'd like to give a special shout-out to my mom for coming to every classroom that I've ever had and helping me set up, break down, or just help out at the schools that I've worked at. Super shout-outs to two people here, Mr. Rashad Wilson for being the first, my first principal in Brevard County. He hired me in, and Ms. Jasmine Delauter, who brought me to this point today. And I would like to thank the rest of the administrative team at the Great Southwest and all the faculty and staff there. There is no other place and no other group of people I would rather do this with. And a thank you to my family, my husband David, my two kids, Cole and Logan. They've put up with a lot, late nights and late pickups. They weren't forgotten, and just, and being voluntold to help out at each of my schools also. Thank each of you and love you. And I thank all my other family and friends and colleagues and coworkers here in Brevard and at the other counties who I still talk with, who have been encouraging and have wished me well on this journey and have taken the opportunity to teach me things. So I look forward to continuing to make a difference and incredibly interested to see where this new chapter will take me. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, this would be our only photo opportunity for the night, so if we could take a short recess.
Absolutely. Short recess. Okay, we are now at the public comments portion of the meeting. Paul, how many?
Three.
We have three speakers, and each will receive three minutes. Our attorney will call the speakers in order in which they signed up to speak. Mr. Gibbs, please call the first three speakers.
Anthony Calucci, Corey Higginbotham, Christine Vogel.
My name is Anthony Calucci, president of the Brevard Federation of Teachers, and I'm speaking tonight on agenda item F11, the 2025-28 Collective Bargaining Agreement. I'm pleased to report that the results of our ratification vote are in: 2,950 yes votes to 183 no votes, for a total of 3,133 valid ballots. That means over ninety-four percent of teachers supported this agreement. Budgeting for raises first is something we've been asking this board to do for a long time, and you deserve recognition for that. But let me be clear, a two percent raise each year for three years falls short of what our teachers truly deserve. Unfortunately, the state continues to under-resource public education, federal budget cuts abound, and we're experiencing declining enrollment, all of which prevent this board from committing to more substantial increases. Even with those challenges, we thank the board for agreeing to meaningful improvements, including new language that ensures relief in healthcare costs with lower deductibles and co-pays, and advanced degree supplements will now be received regardless of certification area. But I also need to say that this board green-lighted efforts to strip away our contract. During this process, the district proposed to get rid of comp time for evening events, remove flex time for religious holidays, eliminate the ability to leave after dismissal when a hurricane warning is in effect, strike out the ability to flex one hour per week, remove comp time for losing planning to assemblies, hurricane prep, or test proctoring, get rid of protections against being moved to different rooms, grades, or assignments, require routine submission of lesson plans, strike out that steering committee recommendations must receive full consideration, remove protection from being required to complete the same in-service year after year, eliminate the ten-day notice before an IEP meeting, return mid-year transfers solely to principals, remove our entire evaluation language, require emails to be answered within twenty-four hours, and remove the expectation that parent complaints first be directed to the teacher. We had to fight to keep every one of those protections in place, and that's why Brevard remains a good place to teach, because we have a strong bargaining team, a strong contract, and a strong union that insists on respect, fairness, and voice for the educators who make this district work. So I'll say what every educator knows: it shouldn't be this hard. It shouldn't take months of bargaining and countless hours just to maintain protection, secure a modest raise, and beat back health insurance costs. Our teachers deserve a better process for this board, but tonight, let's recognize what this is, a step in the right direction, and thank you for it.
Hello, my name is Corey Higginbotham. I go to Manatee Elementary, and I'm in the sixth grade. I'm speaking on I-1. Dr. Rendell spent $21,650 on a guest speaker. Although I was not able to see it live, I was able to watch it on the livestream. The guest speaker was the author of the Coffee Bean book. Dr. Rendell bought all the sixth graders. He spoke about important life lessons and made a difference in the way I think about things. This might seem like a lot of money, but overall, it impacted all sixth graders and students. I like what you spent the money on: me, your future.
Good evening. This is Christine Vogel. Everyone can hear me? Okay. I'm gonna take off my glasses. Hi. Good evening. My name is Christine Vogel, and I'm a parent of a kindergarten student at Surfside Elementary. The Brevard Public Schools mission states that we are here to serve every student with excellence as the standard. I am here tonight because that standard has not been met for my son. Over several weeks, my five-year-old son was physically and sexually assaulted by another student in supervised settings. This is in reference to item H1, for your clarification. These incidents were reported promptly and documented. Yet, the school's response and the district's chosen interim measures have been inadequate to ensure his safety or his equal access to education. Under Florida statute 1006, period 147, the Jeffrey Johnson Stand Up For All Students Act, every school is required to investigate promptly, take effective steps to prevent further harm, and ensure victims are not subjected to retaliation or re-exposure. That has not happened here. It is very concerning to me. The current safety plan places my son back in the same classroom and shared areas with the student who harmed him. This is not a protective measure. It is continued exposure to trauma. It directly contradicts both the intent of the Johnson Act and the district's stated mission of excellence. I am asking this board to review the adequacy of the interim measures and require appropriate protective and trauma-informed actions that prioritize the victim's well-being and access to learning. Up to this current date, my son has not been reached out to for either counseling options. Only after I did contact Dr. Karen Ivory was I provided with one resource, and he has no longer been in school. I had to pull him out for his own safety. Excellence must begin with safety, as I'm plainly stating here. Without it, no child can learn, and no parent can trust that their child is protected in our schools. Thank you.
That concludes the agenda. Items, only public comments. We thank you for taking the time out of your schedule to address the board with your concerns and suggestions. I would like to remind the public that the board is accessible for further conversations outside of our business meeting through scheduling a meeting. We are now at the consent agenda. Dr. Rendell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There are forty-eight items on the list under this category.
Thank you, Dr. Rendell. Does any board member wish to pull any of those items? I will entertain a motion, except-
Roll call for a second.
Any discussion? Paul, roll call.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Ms. Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Trent?
Aye.
Mr. Susan?
Did you say me?
Yep.
Sorry.
Ms. Wright?
Yeah.
Aye.
The final public hearing is now open for public comment. In accordance with Florida law, we will proceed to hear public comments on the following policies. Policy 0124, Standards of Ethics, Ethical Conduct. Is there anyone wishes, anyone present wishes to address these items? Is there anyone present who wishes to address these items? Policy 1120, is there anyone present who wishes to address these items?
Oh, we need to approve them.
Oh, every single one of them?
Every one of them, I make a motion.
You're right.
This is the final hearing, yeah.
Okay. Do I hear motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Thomas? Ms. Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Trent?
Aye.
Mr. Susan?
Aye.
Ms. Wright?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Policy 1120, is there anyone present who wishes to address this item? Is there anyone present who wishes to address this item? Do I hear motion?
Move to approve.
Any discussion? Paul, roll call, please.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Ms. Campbell?
Mr. Trent? Aye.
Mr. Susan?
Aye.
Ms. Wright?
Aye.
Policy 2410, is there anyone present who wishes to address this item? Is there anyone present who wishes to address this item? Do I hear motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Paul, roll call, please.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Ms. Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Trent?
Aye.
Mr. Susan?
Aye.
Ms. Wright?
Aye.
Policy 3121-01, is there anyone present who wishes to address this item? Is there anyone present who wishes to address this item? Do I hear motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Paul, roll call, please.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Ms. Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Trent?
Aye.
Mr. Susan?
Aye.
Ms. Wright?
Aye.
Policy 3130, is there anyone present who wishes to address this item? Is there anyone present who wishes to address this item? Do I hear motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Paul, roll call, please.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Ms. Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Trent?
Aye.
Mr. Susan?
Aye.
Ms. Wright?
Aye.
Policy 3139, is there anyone present who wishes to address this item? Is there anyone present who wishes to address this item? Do I hear motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Paul, roll call, please.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Ms. Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Trent?
Aye.
Mr. Susan?
Aye.
Ms. Wright?
Aye.
Policy 3210, is there anyone present who wishes to address this item? Is there anyone present who wishes to address this item? Do I hear motion?
Second.
Discussion. Paul, roll call, please.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Ms. Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Trent?
Aye.
Mr. Susan?
Aye.
Ms. Wright?
Aye.
Policy 3213, is there anyone present who wishes to address this item? Is there anyone present who wishes to address this item? Do I hear motion?
Move to approve.
Any discussion? We need a second.
Yep. I just gave Mr. Thomas the motion, Mr. Susan the second.
Great. Roll call, please.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Ms. Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Trent?
Aye.
Mr. Susan?
Aye.
Ms. Wright?
Aye.
Policy 3242, is there anyone present who wishes to address this item? Is there anyone present who wishes to address this item? Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Paul, roll call, please.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Ms. Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Trent?
Aye.
Mr. Susan?
Aye.
Ms. Wright?
Aye.
Policy 5200, is there anyone present who wishes to address this item? Is there anyone present who wishes to address this item? Do I hear motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Ms. Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Trent?
Aye.
Mr. Susan?
Aye.
Ms. Wright?
Policy 5223, is there anyone present who wishes to address this item? Is there anyone present who wishes to address this item? Do I hear motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Paul, roll call, please.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Ms. Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Trent?
Aye.
Mr. Susan?
Aye.
Ms. Wright?
Aye.
Policy 5530, is there anyone present who wishes to address this item? Is there anyone present who wishes to address this item? Do I hear motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Ms. Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Trent?
Aye.
Mr. Susan?
Aye.
Ms. Wright?
Aye.
Policy 5600, do I, is there anyone present who wishes to address this item? Is there anyone present who wishes to address this item? Do I hear motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Ms. Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Trent?
Aye.
Mr. Susan?
Aye.
Ms. Wright?
Aye.
Policy 5610, is there anyone present who wishes to address this item? Is there anyone present who wishes to address this item? Do I hear motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Paul, roll call, please.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Ms. Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Trent?
Aye.
Mr. Susan?
Aye.
Ms. Wright?
Aye.
Policy 5630, is there anyone present who wishes to address this item? Is there anyone present who wishes to address this item? Do I hear motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Ms. Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Trent?
Aye.
Mr. Susan?
Aye.
Ms. Wright?
Aye.
Here's the very last one. Policy 8420, is there anyone present who wishes to address this item? Is there anyone present who wishes to address this item? Do I hear motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Ms. Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Trent?
Aye.
Mr. Susan?
Aye.
Ms. Wright?
Aye.
The final public hearing regarding the proposed policy revisions has been officially concluded. Dr. Rendell, will you please let us know about the items under the action portion of today's agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The action item is H1, Code of Student Conduct.
Do I hear motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Paul, roll call, please.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Ms. Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Trent?
Aye.
Mr. Susan?
Aye.
Ms. Wright?
Aye.
We'll move on to the information agenda, which includes one item for the board review and may be brought back for action at a subsequent meeting. No action will be taken on this item today. Does any board member wish to discuss these items, this item? Okay. We are now at board member reports, and who would like to go first? John?
Just quickly, I'd like to acknowledge Rachel Rutledge, who heads up our CTE program. She held a construction advisory group meeting last week, and from all that I've heard from that attended, it was not only well-attended, but well-organized, and I think everybody thought it was productive. I think it's a great step in getting some feedback from our industry leaders on what's going on with our CTE, the direction of our CTE program.
Yeah. Good, good. All right.
I have a lot.
All right.
It's a short meeting, so we can take longer, right?
No.
First of all, I wanted to recognize Rodney Savikas, who is the theater teacher at Mel High. Lena mentioned today, and I want to do the shout-out on her behalf. I didn't get to go myself, but every year, this time of year, they do what's called the Princess Tea Party, and they have students dress up as the Disney princesses, and they perform, but they also greet and do kind of like going to Disney World and getting your photo op, and it's a great performance, and I've heard great things about it, in particular this year. So I wanted to give a shout-out to Mr. Savikas, who does it every year, and to the students, who I heard did an amazing job. It is Walktober, and I have to thank you Board Office and Legal Office team for doing such a great job. It's an initiative for the whole, all the employees across the district to get healthy and stay active, and I have to say, I think this is the best that we have done. We are currently in 27th place out of 127, which I think is pretty good. But shout-out-
I don't even put my name in it.
No, you're not in there. You're not in there. Shout-out to the top three teams currently, which is the West Side Workout Warriors in number one, Pine Wood Elementary On Our Way Out team, and number three as of right now is the Manatee Elementary team. So congratulations to those teams and way to keep moving. We've got a few more weeks. Thank you also to Rachel Rutledge for doing, organizing a great CTE tour at Heritage High School. I really appreciate all the community organizations that came out to see the electric program and the advanced manufacturing program and automotive program, and the digital design and gaming program. There were just lots of great things to show off, but it's, those things don't happen if we don't have our community partners, then it's just us going around who already know about it. So we had lots of great community partners. Last week, we had our West Side Elementary, the new addition that we talked about in our workshop today. We had the groundbreaking for it. We had the mayor there, and a great opportunity. Super excited to see. The dirt is ready for the foundation to go in, and it's gonna be exciting addition that will open next fall, and they're gonna put their sixth graders in there, as well as a state-of-the-art STEM classroom. So I sit, I think I've mentioned this to you before, board, but I sit on the Florida School Music Association Board of Directors that basically oversees MPA rules across the state for all our music things, and one of the things that they pushed for, along with some other music organizations across the state, is the Seal of Fine Arts. And so when we had our meeting this weekend, they were talking about how we really want to encourage our students in high school to get that Seal of Fine Arts. It's, they get an extra cord for graduation, they get a stamp on their diploma. It's, it's just recognizes their hard work, either in art, theater, music, you know, any kind of instrumental groups, and because they've done that, those kind of courses with rigor. Well, I went back and looked at Dr. Rendell's self-evaluation that he sent to us, and I was very proud to shout out yesterday, and this group of people who are musicians from all over the state, that Brevard had 326 students in the first year of its existence qualify for the Seal of Fine Arts. And I don't have the comparison from across the state, but I'd have to say, if we're not, didn't have the high- And I don't have the comparison from across the state, but I'd have to say, if we're not, didn't have the highest number, we had to be. Well, we can say it's number one, but I'm pretty sure it's high up there. So congra, I just wanted to thank the team, Minnie Orr, Tara Harris, of course, all the schools and the teachers who contributed to students making that, that happen. And we're hoping, in the future, they're pushing, they want to make that an opportunity for a school to earn a point, a, what do you call it, Dr. Rendell? A...
A point in college and career acceleration.
Right, acceleration point. That's what I was looking for. So if, many of these students are getting acceleration points for other things, like AP classes. But for the student who like, this is their area to shine, and they've done the good work, they would like for that to be an acceleration point. So they're going to go back to legislature and say, okay, now that we have it, and we have all these districts and all these hundreds and thousands of students who have done it, now let's give them the extra recognition. I wanted to give a big thank you, I told you guys I had a bunch of these. Big thank you to all our county commissioners. I, no, I sat down with four. Ms. Wright, you sat down with one. Just for, we, I mentioned to you guys in the summer that I wanted to do some relationship building across the street. And first, I wanted to thank them for passing our resolution on this morning for the renewal of the absent sales tax in the village. I thank you, Dr. Rendell, for being there this morning. But I just appreciated the four that I met with, districts two, three, four, and five, for taking the time. Because we, they shared with me some of the things that they would like to see for us. And they gave me the opportunity to share some things that I would like to see with our partnership with the county. So I just thank you to all four of those commissioners, or all five, for meeting with us to build that relationship across the street. I want to give, we had a community member reach out, and I don't know if you guys got this email, Board, but a community member reached out. Was very concerned that during the shutdown, we have students who might be going, who might be in greater need. And so I reached out to Kevin Thornton, who always does an amazing job in Food Nutrition Services, and asked them, what can we, what are we doing? What can we do? And between Food Nutrition Services and government and community relations, I know as a parent, I've, I received two different emails in a week reminding our community, our families, that if you are in need right now, you can apply. And so I'm, this is also as an announcement, you can, if there is a change to your income, you can go and apply for food, for free and reduced lunch. Also, if you're a family that is, that is suffering through the shutdown, please reach out to your school. Let them know, we have community resources, we have our social workers assigned to every school. Let your schools know so that they can help you. Because we want to help our families, especially with some changes that might be coming if the shutdown continues through the end of the week. There's some more severe changes happening that will affect our kids. And so, but I just wanted to thank the FNS team and GCR team for putting that out there so quickly. It was a pretty quick turnaround that they sent that out. So thank you for being responsive. And as, on that same topic, every school has what they call an angel fund through the cafeteria. And I know this community member who reached out to me actually said that she had gone around to three different schools that day and paid off the balance for students who, and if you're in the room, you know, I don't know, if she's come to talk to us and I, I don't know. But anybody can do that. I was at Hoover one day, and they had it on the wall in the waiting area. We have an angel fund, so I'm pretty sure you can find it on the district website. If you can't, go to your local school and say, hey, do you have an angel fund? Can I come in and pay off the balance for your students that are, and, and it's not going to be thousands of dollars. Maybe at a big school. But, but if you'd love to be an angel for our community, I know there's some families that could probably use that assistance. All right. That's all my shout-outs. I did have, and I've hesitated whether to say something tonight, but I, I don't know what's coming later in our non-agenda public comment. So I just wanted to take a moment to address one thing. We, it's been out in the public to families about the decision about Capeview. And I read through something that staff sent us that was going around in the community. And I, I seriously was just shocked a little bit and, and very disappointed. There was, there was a document that was going around to residents of Cape Canaveral, and people have every right, and we want to encourage public participation, but it was going around suggesting that there are board members, two board members on this board, who somehow would be, that the decision was being driven by personal gain. And I have to tell you, as someone who's been on the board for, you know, six years longer than one of them, and four years longer than the other one, I have to just give a little historical context. Since I've been on the board, we have been talking about, I remember asking Dr. Mullins, our former superintendent, in 2019, the board came to him and said, "Come up with a plan," because we were, we'd been to Impasse, we were trying to find more money for raises, "what can we do?" And one of our obstacles is, we have more schools per capita than many of our other counties surrounding us. And so we love our small community schools, but honestly, that is, they're, I'm going to, let me just speak plainly. It's, it can be a financial drain, because other counties are more compact. And so they don't have schools that have, you've got some elementary schools with 1,000 kids, and some elementaries with 200 kids. You know, it's, there, there is a, there's a cost to that. And so I, so I say that to say, we've been having those conversations for the last six years at least. And if you have a school that has a population, and I, this is not just limited to the Capeview situation. The board has had, has been in discussions in public meetings, and also in one-on-ones with the superintendent, of some other schools in our, in our county that are under-enrolled and that we might have to take action on, especially when they're in super old buildings that become more and more costly as the years go to, to keep up. And so I just have to say that, we've been having those conversations for a long time. And the idea that any one board member that's being put out there, that they're going to financially gain from this, because like it's just now coming up, I'm not going to say that it would be impossible for that to ever, ever happen, but that is, that is unnecessarily inflammatory. And if, so I hope that no one's coming here with the idea that that's going to happen. But I just wanted to give you, you can keep believing what you want to believe, and I can't tell you not to believe what you want to believe. But I'm just going to tell you, it's because you want to believe it, not because it's the truth. Because over the last six years, I have been having these conversations with two different superintendents now about how we are having schools. We've got a school that went from 400 kids down to 200 kids over the 10 years. What are we going to do? We have to do what is responsible for every student, because our job is to serve every student, and make sure that we're providing them the very best that we can. And so I'm, no more discussion about that. But I just had to say that, because I just was, was appalled. And, and having been, not the longest-serving board member, Mr. Susan would be that, but the second-longest school board member, I just wanted to supply that historical context, and hopefully to say it gently. But thank you, Board, for giving me that time.
Absolutely. Thank you, Ms. Campbell.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell, for those remarks. I appreciate that.
Yes, thank you.
I'm going to move on to a couple of different recognitions that I want to, to give out. So it's been some, some time since we met, obviously. So there's a lot of things that happened in that time. I want to give a shout-out to the Brevard Achievement Center for holding their 12th Annual Performing Arts Event. Ms. Campbell and I joined that. And several of our schools around the district come and perform, and those are some of our children that have unique abilities. And it's just something that is so refreshing and powerful to watch, and the audience is absolutely just thrilled and so supportive. And I, I'm so thankful that we have events like that around our county. It was a special day, so thank you so much for hosting that. That is something I hope that continues for, for years to come. Also, want to say to Dr. Rendell and your team, thank you very much. Did a job well done on our Employee of the Year finalist roundup. That was a lot of fun. So one of the fun things that Dr. Rendell has implemented since being here is that we get to go and present these individuals who are the finalists, the award, and then we take them off-site and take them to lunch and celebrate them. And then, you know, you have to wait and see who's the actual winner of the Employee of the Year. But it's a fun celebration, and it's always a highlight, I think, for people that are looking forward to that. Also, want to give a shout-out to our Brevard County Sheriff's Office and our relationship that we have with them. We received an award, Brevard County Public Schools did, with the Sheriff's Office and their Speak Out Crime Line tip. And so I guess, I guess that's a speak-out. Yeah. I'm going, crime line's not quite, quite correct, but the Speak Out Hotline is a service that's available that people can call and report things that are going on. So they recognized Brevard County as being, hold on, let me not misquote it, because I took a picture of the award. We were the outstanding partner of the year, I believe. So Major Klein is in the room today, so I'm going to go ahead and give him the opportunity to come up and give a speech. No, I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. I'm teasing him right now. But no, just want to say thank you so much. You guys do an amazing job. Along those same lines, want to recognize that today is National First Responders Day. It should be no surprise to anyone in this community that we have gone through some stuff in the last couple of weeks, specifically in the last 48 hours. The North End was hit very hard, and our first responders were out and about in circumstances that were just atrocious, with tons of water and vehicles that were abandoned. It looked like Armageddon. You're going, what is happening? I mean, there's cars literally underwater that people have to, to leave. And so thank you to all of our first responders who sacrifice their time, their safety, every day to make sure that our communities are safe. We really truly appreciate each and every one of you. Also, and along those same lines, I'm going to give a shout-out to a couple of fathers that are in the room. I'm looking at their faces today. So we had an incident that took place at a Port St. John school. And we've had some dads that have stepped up and said, hey, we're going to make sure kids are safe. And so I just want to say to them, thank you so much. I will never, ever, ever object to someone making sure our kids are safe. We appreciate you, and we're grateful for the things that you're doing there. And I know some of you are first responders yourself, so thank you for your service there. And that is all that I have. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Susan?
Dr. Rendell's going to do Coffee Bean.
I promise only to take half as long as Katie did on hers. So just so you guys weren't worried. So I did want to let you guys know, I went to the, I went to the FSBA Board of Directors, went through that. Wanted to bring back some of the stuff. Orange County is working very strongly in workforce, it's on, workforce housing. And what it is, is that they have, they're so dynamically pushing into the workforce housing stages, that I requested an overall view of what they're doing so that we can look at it. One of the problems that we have with workforce housing here in the county is, they come to us when they identify a piece of our property and they say, hey, why don't you give that to workforce housing? And that's just not how we do it. But I think there is a conversation that when the cities and the county and everybody else are willing to come together, that there might be an opportunity there. So what I'll do is I'll bring back that workforce housing piece that Orange County's doing, and let you guys know, but we are, this is in no way an endorsement for workforce housing. It's just that you would be abreast of what's going on inside the state. The other one is, is that I presented as the ad hoc Health and Fitness Committee on the Presidential Youth Physical Fitness. I wanted to bring you guys up to speed on that. Currently, Shape Florida and Shape America have agreed to allow, to see Brevard lead the way. And so what's happening is, is that all the other school districts, in conjunction with Leon County, who has a PE, former PE teacher who is also a school board member, and Gallon, Steve Gallon, the school board member out of Miami-Dade, are going to work with us on a district, or statewide recommendation for all the school boards to follow for Presidential Youth Physical Fitness. In the meantime, Rachel Winston, who used to be our PE teacher, went ahead and, she was the head of all PE teachers for the district. Now she's over at Viera. She's been spearheading the whole thing. She got together and she said, okay, she found the guys from the Presidential Youth Physical Fitness. They said, yeah, we can definitely do this. So they, all of a sudden, gave us a cost that it would cost for all of our schools to, to do it. And I called Health First and Parrish, and they covered the cost of all of our schools to be a part of it. So now Dr. Rendell is very excitedly putting together kind of the behind-the-scenes stuff. And we should be able to sometime this year test our kids and be the leaders in the state of Florida, and then set the tone for the rest. So I just want to give you guys that. Also, I brought up as part of this group, the heart screenings, since we're the first school district in the nation to mandate heart screenings for the thing. And all of a sudden, out of nowhere, one of the school board members stood up and said, this is impossible. You can't do it in a school district like ours. And then all of a sudden, one of the other school board members stood up and said that she lost her kid last year, and it's the reason she ran. And it got so heated that I felt the passion that we felt when we were arguing this thing, and when we see people come in here. So I'm in charge of the implementation with the committee, implementing the recommendations for all, and answering questions for the entire state over how we implemented years ago, the heart screening. So it's a big honor of mine to do that. I also have a couple other school board members throughout the state that are working with us. But the only thing about it is, is that people just don't understand it. And so they throw it up, but then it, it is one of the greatest things we ever did. Also, Thomas Kennedy did a whole presentation on, basically, a lot of security issues wrapped around how AI is now being used to target our kids on social media platforms and everything else. So some of those things I'll bring to our security teams. It's not something I really want to talk about here, because it's kind of disgusting. But the thing is, is that I did want to just let you guys know about that. I did want to tell you that pretty soon here, within about 30 days, we should have a Students with Disabilities webpage that they can sell stuff on. So that like, you have those students with disabilities that have those, have you ever been in here where they sell all of the? Yeah, Blast. Yeah, Blast. Well, there's also students with disabilities that are also not a part of Blast, but the Blast programs are the drivers to be able to sell their goods online. So I thought, how cool would that be for us to go purchase some of that stuff and support those programs? So there's that. And then also, wanted to bring up, let me make sure I did all this. Oh, did you send out the Gray Robinson Session Report from May? I don't know. It was...
Did I send it out in May? Am I have?
I'll resend it, because it's a good document. I didn't want to send it out and be like, you say, oh, my gosh, I sent that out. Like, I didn't want to be that guy, so...
Talking about the legislative...
Legislative session update.
I think it came out in May, because that shit went so long. But I may have sent it out.
It had some, so I'll resend it, but it's a real good overview of what happened in our thing, just for staff to take a look at and stuff like that. I did want to mention, one of the things I'd like to work on, and if it's okay with you guys, is when I go to my calendars on my webpage for my school, sometimes the staff's not on there, sometimes the calendar's not up to date and stuff like that. And it's kind of frustrating. So what I'd like to do is work with Lena on asking them to update their, put in the information they're supposed to. We have ninety-five percent of them have it, but there's some that I get calls from parents inside the community, like, hey, the calendar's not up to date and all that stuff.